Okay, it is, uh, it is six o'clock. And I will call this April fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, meeting of the Andalusia City Council to order. And I'll ask you all to stand and join us in the prayer and pledge of allegiance. My gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for giving us the chance to meet as a city council and to, we ask you for guidance and for wisdom to help lead this community. We thank you for our citizens that give so much of themselves. We thank you for the young people that are here with us tonight. And may they take something away from this meeting that will be of benefit to them in their life. And we ask that you bless all the things that we do, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Welcome our guests tonight. We do have a number of guests with us and we always are happy to have, uh, our citizens come and join us. We particularly note that we have a group of Boy Scouts with us tonight and their leaders, and we welcome you back again and, uh, welcome you to come and join us at any time. First item of business to consider is our minutes for our meeting of April the first to approve and be accepted.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the minutes of April the first.
All right, we have a motion to accept and approve the minutes of April the first. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. And I thank you for that. We have no unfinished business. We do have a very special bit of new business to take care of tonight. And I'm gonna ask, uh, Councilman Mayor Pro Tem Terry Powell, if he will, to join me down front. And I'm gonna ask Mr. Kerry Baker and his lovely wife if they'll come down and sit in this front row for just a minute. I'm also gonna ask our state representative, Mike Jones, if he'll join us here at the podium. And, uh, we've got some business to take care of. Uh, Mike, you can go first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that segue. I appreciate that. Um, well, it's my honor to be here. And, uh, I actually have a great number of memories of coming back to this, uh, to this meeting and to City Hall. It's, uh, it's good to be back. But today, we're here to honor somebody who has, um, been a part of our community for a very long period of time. He was, uh, I'm not gonna say years, I'm not, um, but he's somebody that I've had great respect for, for a lo- very, very long time. Um, and my memories go back, and this person we're talking about is Kerry Baker. Uh, my memories go back, uh, even through, I think, high school and, uh, junior college. It's been quite a lo- a long time back. Uh, but those were my first memories of working, uh, and back then it was Amaco Fabrics, I believe. Um, and Kerry's been a part of this community, not only as a leader at Amaco Fabrics and Shaw Industries, but also, um, in so many other ways. And, uh, I think right now you're on the Chamber Board of Directors as well. And so it doesn't stop. And that says a lot about a person, says a lot about a commitment to our community, that you've never stopped, you've stayed strong, you've stayed with us, and, uh, and you believe in this community, and it shows, uh, daily. Uh, I come today to bring a resolution, and, uh, I'm gonna read it. That's probably the easiest way to handle these things, so I'll just go ahead and go forward and read it. Commending Kerry Baker for professional achievement. Whereas it is with highest commendation that Kerry Baker of Andalusia, Alabama, is recognized for his many achievements during a distinguished professional career in the textile industry. And whereas he has announced his retirement effective February twenty-eighth, two thousand and fourteen, as Shaw Industries Manufacturing Director at Andalusian Polypropylene Technical Segment. And whereas a graduate of Georgia Institute of Technology, he began his career in nineteen seventy-three at Cone Mills Corporation, and in nineteen seventy-seven joined Amaco Fabrics and Fibers Company, which was acquired by Shaw Industries Group Incorporated in nineteen ninety-two. And whereas he has been a leader in professional organizations, including serving as president and other top offices of both the Alabama Textile Manufacturers Association and the Alabama Textile Education Foundation. And whereas his extensive civic involvement encompasses the Andalusia Op Airport Authority, the Lurleen B Wallace College Foundation Board of Directors, and the Andalusia City Schools Foundation Board of Directors. And whereas he is married to Louisa M. Baker and has two children, two stepchildren, and seven grandchildren. And whereas through the years, he has earned respect for his exceptional abilities and tireless dedication, and he is truly deserving of a special recognition as he embarks upon his well-earned retirement as Shaw Industries Manufacturing Director at Andalusian Polypropylene Technical Segment, now therefore be it resolved by the House of Representatives of the Legislature of Alabama that Kerry Baker is hereby recognized and commended for his distinguished career spanning more than four decades in the textile industry. And this resolution is offered in tribute to him along with best wishes in all future endeavors. Thank you, sir.
As Mayor Pro Tem, you get to stand in for the mayor. I don't know what you call when you stand in for the state senator. Senator Hawley could not be here tonight, but he too has put together a resolution from the State Senate. And I will read that. Commending Kerry Baker for professional achievement by Senator Hawley. Whereas it is with highest commendation that Kerry Baker of Andalusia, Alabama, is recognized for his many achievements during a distinguished career in the textile industry spanning almost forty-one years. And whereas he has announced his retirement effective February twenty-eighth, two thousand and fourteen, as Shaw Industries Manufacturing Director at Andalusia and Polypropylene Technical Segment. And whereas a graduate of Georgia Institute of Technology, he began his career in nineteen seventy-three at Cone Mills, and in nineteen seventy-seven joined Amaco Fabrics and Fibers Company, which was acquired by Shaw Industries Group Incorporated in nineteen ninety-two. And whereas he has been a leader in professional organizations, including serving as president and other top offices of both the Alabama Textile Manufacturers Association and the Alabama Textile Education Foundation. And whereas his extensive civic involvement encompasses the Andalusia Op Airport Authority, the LBW Community College Foundation Board of Directors, and the Andalusia City Schools Foundation Board of Directors. And whereas he is married to Louisa M. Baker and has two children, two stepchildren, and seven grandchildren. And whereas through the years, he has earned respect for his exceptional abilities and tireless dedication, and he is truly deserving of special recognition as he embarks upon his well-earned retirement as Shaw Industries Manufacturing Director at Andalusia and Polypropylene Technical Segment, now therefore be it resolved by the State of, by the Senate of the Legislature of Alabama, that Kerry Baker is hereby recognized and commended for his distinguished career spanning almost forty-one years in the textile industry. And this resolution is offered in tribute to him along with best wishes in all future endeavors. And it is my honor.
Now it's my turn, Kerry. And I wanna start off by saying, uh, I've had the pleasure of serving with Kerry on a number of boards and organizations, uh, and the, the one that stands out in my mind the most is our Airport Authority. And, uh, I was appointed in nineteen eighty-nine as a member of the Airport Authority, and Kerry came on not too long after that. And he served as our chairman for many, many years. And even after I was elected, uh, mayor, he continued to serve as, uh, as our chairman. Great strides have been made at our Andalusia Airport, uh, under his leadership. And, uh, you never know, uh, the lives you touch until you just look around the community and see the things that Kerry Baker has been involved in this community. There's almost too many to count. But, uh, having said that, uh, I would like to read a resolution or proclamation of appreciation, better such stated, uh, that reads as follows. City of Andalusia. Whereas Kerry Baker began his career with Amaco Fabrics and Fibers, now known as Shaw Industry Group, in May of nineteen seventy-seven, and has held numerous positions at the Bainbridge, Georgia and Andalusia, Alabama plants. Whereas Mr. Baker began working at the Andalusia Plant in nineteen eighty-two as a process engineer, and has made the Andalusia, and has made Andalusia his home since nineteen eighty-six. And whereas Mr. Baker became the Andalusia Plant Manager and was responsible for two Andalusia major plant expansions and other important innovations in Andalusia. And whereas the continued success of the Andalusia Plant is largely due to Mr. Baker's hard work, vision, technical skills, and leadership. And whereas Mr. Baker also held positions with numerous boards and organizations such as President, Vice President, and Treasurer of the Alabama Textile Manufacturers Association Board of Directors, President and Vice President of the Alabama Textile Foundation Board of Directors, Chairman of the South Alabama Regional Airport Authority, the LBW Community College Foundation Board of Directors, and the Andalusia City School Foundation Board of Directors. And whereas Mr. Baker is a loving husband to Louisa Baker, a caring father and grandfather, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the council of the City of Andalusia that we do hereby congratulate him upon his recent retirement and express our sincere appreciation to Kerry Baker for his many years of service, commitment, and loyalty to Andalusia, Covington County, and the surrounding area, day to day as day.
March the third was Monday morning this year, for the first time in over thirty years, that I did not report directly to this man. In nineteen ninety, some twenty-four years ago, the Amaco Foundation gave a ninety thousand dollar grant. And I tell you this story because I think it points to the vision that he has. He assigned me to work with some city people, officials, on what to do with that money. And this is the charge that he gave to me. He said, "When you come to the conclusion and this committee decides what's going to be done and everything is said and done, fifty years later, when people look at this, I want them to say, these people put a lot of thought into what was developed here." And it is that vision that has benefited Amaco Fabrics and Fibers, Shaw Industries, and the community and the surrounding area. And I personally have been benefited from a close working relationship that, how many of you have worked for the same person for over thirty-one years? So Kerry, thank you for what you have done for me and for this community.
Come on up here.
I really appreciate the resolutions, the proclamations, the recognition. I hope I have lived somewhat close up to all those kind words and things people have said. But Andalusia has been my home since we moved here and is our home. One of the first things we, when we were retiring, people had, "Well, where are you gonna move? You gonna leave?" No, we're not leaving. We're staying right here. You stuck with us. But, you know, you can't build a plant, 'cause I started working on the Andalusia Plant before it was ever built. Uh, that was part of my assigned responsibilities. When, one day, my boss at the time in Bainbridge said, "Uh, you know we're gonna start working on a plant in Andalusia, Alabama?" And I said, "Okay, where's that?" And he proceeded to tell me, and then after several more weeks, we were working on that project, he came back into my office one day and said, "Um, how do you feel about the plant we're working on in Andalusia?" I said, "Looks real good. I think it's gonna be really good." He said, "Well, your job starts there Monday. You got any problem with that?"
This was on Friday.
"No, sir. I'd like to stay employed, so I'll be there. Just make sure you show me the map on how to get there." But that was a different time. A lot of people can't relate to that kinda way of having a job and the responsibilities that go with it. But Andalusia's been a wonderful town, been very welcoming, not only to me, but to every other and other generations of people that have come into, to the plant and to the community. And I think that's a real hallmark. But it's a constant thing. We all have to stay hard at work to make it a thriving and successful community. And I applaud the, the council, you know, the scouts, and every other group that really worked to help make sure our community grows and stays viable and is one people do wanna live in and do wanna operate businesses in, because that's what makes us be able to have a life. And again, I just appreciate all that everybody has done, uh, with me and for me, sometimes to me. But, uh, you know, it's a very special time to be able to retire and get to that point. You know, I, when I was early and young and getting out, "Yeah, I'm gonna retire by the time I'm fifty-five." Well, that didn't quite happen. Several other things happened along the way, too. But, you know, it is one of those things you look forward to, but you're never really ready for. Uh, especially when you're, you have the kinds of people that I've had working for me and with me, uh, taking care of lots of people on lots of jobs and helping keep a tremendous economic influence into South Alabama. It's not just Andalusia and Covington County, but South Alabama. You really could account North Florida, too, because we've got considerable number of employees that drive up here every day from North Florida. So, again, I just appreciate everybody working with us and for us all these years and for everything you've done. Please keep it up, and thank you very much.
I recognize the scouts and their leaders when, when they, when we started early. I might say to you young men, if you wanna grow up and be a, a leader, there's one right there. And, uh, he'd be a good, he'd be big shoes to fill, he'd be good ones to fill. So, thank you for being here. Okay, now we get down to, uh, our regular business. We had a presentation upstairs by Addie Gant, who is, uh, involved with our school system here and also, uh, with dan- dancing, uh, teaching of dance to our young folks. Uh, she had some professional dancers down here this week, uh, from, did she say New York? I can't remember. I think it was New York.
New Jersey.
Came down and helped, uh, in a project that she had, has going called Rhythm Moves Project. And, uh, she asked us, uh, for some financial help, uh, to help pay the, the salaries of those folks who came down here and the cost, the cost of getting him here and so forth. And, uh, I think the council feels moved to, uh, to help with that project because it's really, uh, something unique and special to Andalusia and makes us a special place to be. And, uh, so, uh, I think we, uh, are ready to take any motion to help out and that, whatever we do, the money would come out of our contingency fund.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we assist this Rhythm Moves Project as we were demonstrated so, uh, enlightened so and spontaneously demonstrated up in workshop. Uh, looked like something very nice, but I make a motion to assist this group in their educational process.
All right, uh, do you wanna set an amount on that?
Well, I'm sorry, we, to the tune of a hundred, uh, a thousand dollars.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to, uh, contribute a thousand dollars to this project, which we would need to include in that, uh, this is serving a public purpose and education purpose for our young folks. Uh, that money would come from contingency. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? I believe that's unanimous, and I thank you for that. We also had a presentation by Shaleah Tisdal, uh, who, uh, is representing the Alabama Junior Rodeo Association. And, uh, they're going to have their finals here in Andalusia this year. Uh, and they're working towards bringing some other, uh, junior rodeo events, uh, including high school finals, uh, again, back to Andalusia. And, uh, she has asked us for some help, uh, with expenses connected with, with that. Uh, there would be, uh, about sixty, uh, young people involved in the competition. And of course, they would bring with them, I think they, she said, from the eighth grade, uh, or from eight years old to...
Kindergarten through eighth grade.
Kindergarten through eighth grade. Uh, uh, so they would, the children that age, obviously, would they have parents and grandparents and, uh, grandparents and aunts and uncles and brothers and sisters that would be with them. Some would stay in hotels and motels in our community, some would, certainly would buy, uh, goods and gasoline and, and other stuff that they need while they're here, some of who, some of whom would be here all, an entire week. Uh, she has asked us to help, uh, offset some of the, of the costs associated with putting that, uh, event on. And, uh, I think that we have come to a, a meeting of the minds on what, uh, the council would like to do. Would someone like to make a motion with respect to that?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we contribute, uh, to the Alabama Junior Rodeo Association, uh, the same amount that the county commission agrees to fund, up to fifteen hundred dollars, and the funds to be taken from contingency.
All right, sir. The motion, as I understand it, is we would, we would contribute up to fifteen hundred dollars to match a similar, uh, grant by the Covington County Commission.
Right.
In other words, we'll match whatever they do with a maximum for us to pay up to fifteen hundred dollars, and that would come out of contingency. Do we have a second on that motion?
I second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor of, of, of the motion as stated, please indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed, same sign. And that carries, and I thank you for that. And we will pass that message along tomorrow to Ms. Tisdal and also to Ms. Gant. Our next, uh, item is a resolution of two thousand and fourteen, uh, dash zero four, which is a two thousand and fourteen sidewalk, sidewalk grant application. We, uh, had a meeting with our engineer on this, uh, couple of meetings back, and talked about a couple of sidewalk projects. This resolution right here does not commit us to a particular project yet or particular design, but it does, uh, give us the right, or it does give our, our engineer the right to go ahead and file an application for, with the State Department of Transportation, a di- and it's called a TAP grant, T A P. Uh, and that would be a twenty percent, uh, match from us, depending on what the grant turns out to be. Now again, this does not commit us to the grant yet, it just simply authorizes the engineering firm to go out and apply for the grant and bring it back. If we get it, then we decide what we're gonna do with it. All right, do we have a motion that we approve this resolution?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution two thousand and fourteen dash oh four, the Aldott TAP Grant Application.
All right, we have a motion to approve the resolution. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve the resolution. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. And that is unanimous, and that resolution is approved. Uh, we have, uh, some, some vacancies on the T and R Committee. That's our, uh, the T and R Committee is the committee that works so hard on, on a lot of the, excuse me, a lot of projects that we have here. It's, it's the Tourist Relocation is the full name of the committee. Uh, they've been really involved in a lot of, a lot of great events that we've had in City of Andalusia over the past several years. And there's some vacancies to be filled on that. And, uh, would, do we have any nominations to fill those vacancies?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Mary Jane Winkler, Melissa Gamble, and Louise Anderson to the Tourism and Relocation Committee.
All right, uh, we have a nomination. You heard the three names. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any for other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor of Mary Jane Winkler, Melissa Gamble, and Louise, uh, Anderson? Please indicate by raising your right hand. And that, too, is unanimous, and I thank you for that. Uh, we had a request from, uh, Mr. Andy Wiggins, who is, uh, the, uh, Department Head for our Planning and Development, uh, Department for some equipment. Uh, and this is a, this is some major equipment. These will be two large, two of our large, uh, tractors that are used to cut right-of-way, cut grass, maintain, uh, a lot of work here in town that, uh, the, the tractors that they will be replacing are about, I think, about twelve years old. And, uh, some are, the two are getting in pretty bad shape. So what we have authorized, uh, Mr. Andrew, uh, excuse me, Mr. Wiggins to do is to go out and get bids, uh, for two of these, for two tractors meeting certain specifications that will be drawn up. And then those bids will be brought back later and reviewed, uh, at a bid opening. And at some point, will either be, the low bid will be approved, or, uh, we won't approve any of the bids. So, uh, that will be taken care of. It'll probably be another meeting before we have anything to bring back to you, or maybe a, a couple of meetings before we have anything to bring back to the council on that. Uh, we've been talking about, uh, two thousand and fourteen spring cleanup here in Andalusia for a while, and, uh, I'm gonna ask, uh, Mr. Mount, if he will, to, uh, bring us, kinda bring us up to date on where we are on our spring cleanup.
Mayor, the date is fast approaching. And I want everybody to put it on the calendar. We're gonna have one week, April twenty-seventh through May third, to clean up Andalusia. We, uh, our committee, the enhancement committee, had a poster contest. Uh, we coerced the elementary school to do the poster contest. And we had, uh, winners, and we picked, we've got winners in just about every grade. And we're going to try to take these posters that they did and put them on yard signs and let people put them in their yard. I know the people who own these kids or the grandparents of these kids will be more than happy to put them in their yard. If not, shame on them. But anyway, we're excited about cleaning up Andalusia. We need to all work together. And also, we've, we're gonna provide bags, and we're gonna try to have bags in several locations, police department, maybe the fire department, here at City Hall, at the farmer's market, and anyone else that would like. Johnson Park. Johnson Park, and anyone else that would like to help distribute these bags. And what we're requesting is that people clean up their neighborhoods, walk along the streets or whatever, and put the trash in these bags. And we've got it cleared. Once you put them in the bags, you can tie them up, make sure you tie them up, and lay them next to the road or put them in your hobo, and the city crews will pick them up. But, you know, it, it's gotta take everybody working together to make our city beautiful. And if we don't do it, no one else will. So let me encourage all, everybody, so let's try to, maybe we're gonna have some pretty weather. Maybe it's not gonna be freezing cold, but anyway, I may encourage everybody. The council's working hard. They, they promised me that they're gonna clean up their districts. They promised me that. And the mayor's gonna make sure that all districts are clean. Right, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
But if you have any questions, call City Hall or call me. I'll be glad to furnish you with bags or get them to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mount. Again, that, uh, is the week beginning April the twenty-second, and, uh, you can get the bags all over town, here at City Hall and places he mentioned. But take your, one side of your street that you live on, or one side of the road you live on, and walk down it, pick it up, tie up the stuff, put it beside the road, and our people will pick it up just like they would if you put a pile of shrubs out in front of your house. They'll get it that week.
Going down your district, giving them bags.
Yeah, and, and you can come get them and carry them around, uh, and give them to your neighbors. And let's, let's really get Andalusia cleaned up really nice for spring, and then hopefully we can keep it clean, uh, a little better. Uh, let's see. We have, uh, we had a report on the Fagan Avenue Project, which is, uh, F-. We have, uh, we had a report, uh, on the Fagan Avenue Project, which is, uh, uh, fast taking shape, uh, off Fagan Avenue, uh, and we, we'll, we'll consider, uh, maybe before our next meeting, is whether or not we're going to exercise, uh, the alternate bid on that, on the paving over there. Uh, but that, that was discussed at our work, uh, session upstairs. Uh, we need to make an appointment, uh, to our city prosec- the city prosecutor position. Uh, Mr. Patrick McCowman has been our prosecutor now for several years, and he is leaving private practice and going in, uh, into, uh, working for Powersouth, and needs to get, uh, loose himself from that responsibility. So we need to appoint a licensed attorney, uh, to act as our city prosecutor in city court.
I'd like to make a nomination to that, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to nominate the attorney, Mr. Alan Woodard, as our city prosecutor.
All right, we have a nomination for Mr. Woodard. Do we have a second on that nomination?
I'll second.
All right, a motion, a nomination and a second. Do we have any other nominations? All in favor of the nomination is seconded, please indicate by raising your right hand. And that nomin- that, uh, appointment is now made. Mr. Woodard. Okay, is there anything else to come before the council tonight? Again, we want to congratulate, uh, uh, everyone for being here tonight. This is an important occasion in, in, uh, in our community. Uh, we've had a leader, I don't want to go on about this too long, because I don't want to embarrass anybody, but, uh, uh, what Mr. Baker has meant to, uh, Covington County, to South Alabama and this whole area, uh, with his vision and leadership and his determination to make this plant the most successful plant in the Shaw family, uh, cannot be overstated. And, uh, I, uh, thank you for that, Kerry. And, uh, we appreciate, uh, the great support that you now have in your retirement. I used a football parlance while ago, y'all may not have heard, I told him when he married Louisa, he outkicked his coverage, so... Okay, we stand adjourned.